Oh, yes, we do. Tina Honeycutt should now be able to unmute.
Thank you very much. I haven't made it to a lot of meetings lately, but I promised previously that I would continue to urge the council to consider ways that they can use the means that are being given to them to assist our neighbors that are unhoused. And I would love for you to reconsider and look at the possibility of adding restrooms at Seminary Square Park and hand washing facilities. I think that that would be a wonderful use of funds and ways to to kind of detract from the harm that seems to be done from the folks that tend to hang out in Seminary Square. I think that a lot has been done by our community to show that they believe that the people there aren't deserving and are dangerous. And I think that remembering that they're part of the community and being with them and respectful would go a long way to making that a better community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments with Sunny Cut. Do we have anyone else? Have you seen Mr. Lucas?
Yes, we have a request from Renee. We should now be able to unmute.
I'd like to echo Ms. Honeycutt. Can you hear me?
I can. Can you give us your full name, please?
Yes, Renee Miller.
How are you?
I'd like, I'm fine. Thank you, President Sims. How are you?
I'm good.
I'm good. I'd like to echo Ms. Honeycutt and also request that we treat our unhoused with some respect. When we give people respect, then they start showing respect. And I think that's a good starting place to show care and compassion to those folks. And that's the very least we could do is give them bathrooms and hand washing stations. It's being done all across the country and it's still not being done in Bloomington, Indiana. So let's make it happen. I know we have some funds. I heard the budget discussion there. I heard Mayor Hamilton talking about there being funds in that budget. So let's see if we can get the parks and rec to get that done for us. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank the public for those comments. Seeing none further, we're now moving to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards or commissions this evening? Okay, seeing none. We do have legislation this evening for second readings and resolution. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that Resolution 21-18 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Scamblerie.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bolan.
Yes.
And Rosenberger. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And passes nine oh. Councilmember Flaherty.
I believe we need a reading from the clerks.
Okay, we just took roll. I'm sorry. It has already been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis only ordinance, I'm sorry, Resolution 21-18.
Resolution 21-18, a resolution extending the term of ordinance 20-11 and calling for the continuation of other temporary regulations. The synopsis is, this resolution extends the term of ordinance 20-11, which is set to expire under the terms of Resolution 20-19 on August 6, 2021 to October 31, 2021. Ordinance 20-11 waived certain formalities contained in the Bloomington Municipal Code related to signs and seating encroachments. The temporary suspension of these formalities has assisted the local business community as it copes with and recovers from the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. This resolution also requests that the Transportation and Traffic Engineer issue an additional temporary order to allow for the continued use of pickup and drop off zones and dine-in parklets until and including October 31, 2021.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that Resolution 21-18 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Then properly moved and seconded. We have a doble Ms. Kaiser Goodman to present this evening.
Yes. Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time. My name is Kaiser Goodman, and I'm the Special Projects Manager in the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development. I'm speaking to you once more about continuing the pickup, drop off zone, parklet and cookwood conversion programs. As was just read, this is related to ordinance 2011 passed in June of 2020, which was then extended with resolutions 2015 and 2019 in 2020. This is currently set to expire on August 6, 2021. In conjunction with temporary orders from the Department of Public Works and resolutions from the Board of Public Works, these legislations accommodated the pickup, drop off zone, parklet and the conversion of several blocks of cookwood to a pedestrian and outdoor dining space. While the Governor's Executive Order related to restaurant capacity has ended, we know anecdotally from both restaurants and customers that many patrons are still more comfortable dining outside or getting carryout. As a result, restaurants and bars are still eager to expand its outdoor seating as they attempt to recoup pandemic-related revenue losses. While city staff had previously recommended a continuation of these programs through the end of June 2021, based on feedback from downtown businesses, Downtown Bloomington, Inc., the Cookwood Community Association and Patrons of Downtown Businesses, it has been suggested to staff that the city should continue the program through October 31, 2021. This program extension also provides greater predictability for both downtown businesses and patrons of those businesses, as there will be greater clarity about these programs' continuation during the 2021 season. And this recommendation was made with consensus among many city departments. Resolution 21-18 asks the council for the support of continuing these programs. Logistically, this means council approval to continue waiving requirements related to outdoor seating and I'm sorry, outdoor dining and signage. Council support of another Board of Public Works resolution to continue the cookwood closure and encroachments and council support for another temporary order to allow the pickup, drop off zones. A couple of quick updates since I spoke to you last in December. While the pickup, drop off zones have been in place since August, there have been some adjustments made. Zones have been added, moved and removed over the last 10 months based on requests from local businesses and local business organizations. While some are more heavily utilized than others, businesses are relying less on takeout services. Things return to some semblance of normalcy. In an attempt to balance competing parking needs, staff has completed outreach to businesses to see if their nearby pickup, drop off zones continue to be helpful. The goal is to keep the program in place for those who benefit from it while minimizing the disruption to metered parking. For the cookwood conversion with outdoor dining and the parklet programs, both continued through the warm weather in 2020 and were relaunched in the spring with some modifications. For the fall 2020 season, the impacted blocks of cookwood were closed only on the weekends. Based on feedback from the KCA and the survey conducted by Downtown Bloomington, Inc., there was a strong desire for local businesses to have the blocks from Indiana to Dunn, Dunn to Grant and the west half of the Washington to Walnut block close continuously to vehicular traffic. This preference was mirrored by labor concerns from the Department of Public Works as it took a significant amount of staff time to implement and remove the bollards every weekend. As a result, those two and a half blocks of cookwood have been closed continuously since mid-March. The other modification that we've made is we've set an 11:00 PM limit on serving alcohol in parklets or in the street seating on cookwood. This does not impact regular indoor or regular patio seating. In conclusion, Resolution 21-18 is essentially a continuation of the ordinance and resolutions passed in 2020 related to the pickup, drop off zones, parklets and closures. These modifications have continued to prove valuable and city staff feels it is in the best interest of our community to continue them through October 31 of 2021. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Goodman. We'll go to council now for any questions from council. Councilmember Rallo and then Councilmember Scamblerie.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. I wondered if there were any any problems associated with this policy that you could share with us.
Yeah, so like I mentioned in my presentation, though, of course tensions between parking and outdoor dining needs is a finite amount of space. So if we implement a parklet or a pickup, drop off zone, it does decrease the amount of regular metered parking. There is staff time that is used to implement these programs, like setting up the orange Josie barriers, refilling them with water and from our parking staff monitoring the pickup, drop off zones. So we in EST have tried to stay in close contact with the other departments, which is quite a lengthy list of departments that are impacted by this and reach decisions based on consensus as well as being really intentional about our outreach to local businesses, including both emails and going door to door and seeing, you know, what is still working? Is this still helpful so that we can make sure that if we are going to make these modifications, it's for a really good reason and it's having a really positive impact? One of the other concerns that has been brought up, which is something that we are working very seriously on mitigating, is the accessibility of especially the closed blocks of Kirkwood. So some of the things that we've done, myself and Michael Schumus in the city did a cursory accessibility assessment of the closed blocks of Kirkwood and have made some, are working on some modifications such as suggesting that, or asking restaurants that are using the dining in the street to put temporary ramps in so that that space is accessible to everybody. As well as we are currently undergoing an analysis of the ADA spaces in the, in that area, especially since some spaces have been blocked because of the closed street and are working with engineering on that as well.
I see. So we to understand that the sentiments of the restaurants is generally positive? Maybe almost unanimous or close to that?
Yes, so for the
Okay. And are there any, are there any businesses that are, that claim that this is hurting your revenue stream having this policy?
So for the parklets, we make sure that they are only in front of the businesses that are using them and they are still required to do outreach to the other impacted businesses. A couple of the parklets that were in place during the colder months, there was some concerns from merchants during like the holiday shopping season, but I personally have not received any complaints about the parklet program recently. And we do on, for each parklet implemented, work with the restaurants and the nearby businesses to make sure that there's still parking available for everybody. For on Kirkwood, I have to say that Downtown Bloomington, Inc. did a really thorough survey of each of the blocks and was able to find, for example, in the Walnut to Washington block, every business on that block was supportive. On the Dunn to Grant block, it was overwhelmingly supportive. There were a couple of restaurants that did have some concerns. Some of those have since kind of changed their minds and realized that it can be advantageous to them. But we are operating with the goal of consensus, but following the the will of the majority on those blocks.
I see. So unbalanced. It's good to maintain for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scamblerie.
Yes, thank you. I had a similar question, so I appreciate that, Councilmember Rallo. Also, Ms. Goodman, just, I guess I want to double check an impression I have with you. It seems as if downtown businesses that have a presence in what was formerly the street, like Uptown and Farm to the Fourth, have made some pretty significant investments and seem to be increasing their investments in outdoor tables and tents and outdoor heaters and things like that. What are, what are you hearing in that regard from businesses?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, Councilmember Scamblerie, and that's part of the reason why I'm speaking to you today and asking for an extension all the way through the end of October. And that is to give as much predictability as possible. We have received really overwhelmingly positive feedback, not only from the businesses that are actively using the street, but from other local businesses, even ones that aren't using it on Kirkwood. And so we want to create as much predictability as possible and give them as much notice so that if they are aware that the conversion will remain through the end of October, they're able to budget accordingly and determine whether it's worth it for them to make those additional investments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Ms. Goodman. I have a question about longer term even than this resolution contemplates and wondering what internal discussions and/or discussions with businesses may look like about both the parklet program for dining for restaurants as well as Kirkwood closure or even other street closure potentially, but Kirkwood I know is long been contemplated in various months of the year. And I think it speaks to what some of what Councilmember Scamblerie just brought up as well, which is that a lot of cities that have had these programs in place prior to the pandemic, it's that increased predictability allows a level of investment that creates an even more vibrant and charming streetscape because restaurants invest in their own way to block off parking spaces, for instance, and maybe add planters and other things that are, that are really quite neat. So I've spoken before in the past about my support for those types of programs generally outside the context of a pandemic. And I'm just wondering how conversations are evolving within the city staff on that at this point.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Flaherty. So in some of my outreach, I have received comments from businesses who are using all three of these programs, especially the parklets and the cookwood conversion, about their desire for it to remain. So I would say that we're currently in kind of a fact finding stage. I'm looking into logistics and pricing for what it would just kind of doing some research on what that would look like as far as the parklets go. I definitely can't speak to, you know, a goal of, of having that program go on. But based on feedback we've gotten, we want to do our due diligence and see what is feasible and beneficial to the community. The cookwood conversion, if it was to become more semi-permanent or permanent, would obviously be a much larger undertaking. So I will just say anecdotally is that I have had many people, local business owners and patrons of them, ask me if it's going to become permanent or say that they want it to. So I would again say that that's a conversation that involves many different departments because of the number of, you know, logistical things impact, that would be impacted by doing that. And so we are basically just kind of in a, in a fact finding stage right now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to ask about the, the trash receptacles that are, you know, on the sidewalks on Kirkwood. And I've heard some reports that they, they get overly full these days because there's so many more people that are just hanging out in the streets. Is that something that Public Works is aware of or that has come up in conversations?
Yes, Public Works is aware of that and they are emptying those more regularly. And then one of the other things that was impacting it was some of the restaurants on Cookwood that are using the street have like a large pizza box or something like that that can get jammed and make the trash can not as usable. So there has been outreach done to some of those businesses to see if there's like another receptacle that can be used or a smaller carryout box. So that is something that we are aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If any other questions from councilmembers. Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to comments for the public on Resolution 21-18. If you indicate to speak, please do so by using the raise hand function in Zoom and or send our meeting host a note through chat indicating your intent to speak. Do we have anyone? Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any takers at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll now go to council for final comments. Councilmember Scamblerie.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the question from Councilmember Piedmont Smith and share a brief story regarding trash receptacles. I was having lunch at Lenny's under the tent that's covered outside and at a distance happened to see Adam Wason walk by. He didn't see our group. And I saw him stop, take a picture with his phone of an overflow trash barrel, apparently texted in via U report, and before we finished lunch, they had come and taken care of it. So I'm sure Adam isn't out constantly in that regard, but it was just a nice example of something working well. So I was pleased to see that. I also wanted to share that I, as many people know, I serve as council's appointee to the Downtown Bloomington, Downtown Bloomington, Inc., and have been very impressed with how thoughtful they are in considering it. They know it's a change. They know it's a departure from what we've done in the past for the city. They're very conscious of accessibility issues as well, and I've heard very robust discussions on that. So I just wanted to convey how impressed I am by the work they've done and the thoughtfulness and intentionality that they've brought to the conversations, and I'm delighted to support this. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowden.
Yes, thank you. I haven't had a lot to say about this because I'm very supportive of the program, the way it's been rolled out. I think it's met with a lot of satisfaction among members of the public and the business community alike. I share Ms. Goodman's caution about simply going straight to a permanent closure of the street. There are many schools of thought about this, not the least of which is that it is possible in theory to have a single lane where cars are forced by the design speed of the road to go five miles an hour to, to make a, a street that's truly amenable to all users without closing it and that there are many pitfalls to permanent closure of streets, which is not to say that I'm against it, but that's why, like I said, I share her caution and I think that she has exactly the right attitude towards it. So, but most of all, I appreciate that this has been driven by the constituents of Kirkwood or of the streets where there are closures and not been top down. It's, it was the right tone to take. And I just, you know, I think I predicted when this first got passed in the early part of last year that it was already too short, like we, this would be a popular thing. It's proven to be that way. And I'm glad for it. So I'm very supportive of it. And I, again, I appreciate the, the pace at which we're thinking about further moves. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I would support the extension through the warmer weathers this summer. While we are waiting for the pandemic to kind of come to its conclusion with more people getting vaccinated, but I will remind everyone that we do have other businesses in the downtown that are eagerly anticipating opening up more. That certainly includes the Buskirk Chimley Theater and the Waldron, of course, in January. So when theater seasons start to get cooking again and our performances in the downtown, we'll want to make sure that we're also accommodating those businesses as well as our wonderful local restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any of Councilmember Rallo?
Just to weigh in to say, I agree that it's, I appreciate EST keeping, having this policy, initiating it, maintaining it to, to keep restaurants viable at difficult times. It's an interesting experiment to see, you know, what, how, how this plays out and whether or not something more permanent is could be entertained or whether, whether, as Councilmember Sandberg said, there's, there's a negative downside to, to it, trade off. So, but I will support this this evening. In the meantime, thank you.
Thank you. Any further counts or comments from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 21-18?
Councilmember, Council President Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bolan.
Yes.
Rosenberger.
Yeah.
Scamblerie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 21-18 is approved nine zero. We do have more res. Thank you. Be me to it. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Resolution 21-20 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to be read by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bolan.
Yes.
Rosenberger.
Yeah.
Scamblerie.
Yes.
And Sims.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves nine oh. It's been moved and seconded, that ordinance, I'm sorry. Resolution 21-20 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 21-20, to designate an economic revitalization area, approve the statement of benefits and authorize an abatement period for real property improvements regarding property at 1730 South Walnut Street, Retreat at Switchyard, Real America LLC, Retreat at Switchyard LP petitioner. The synopsis is, this resolution designates two parcels located at 1730 South Walnut Street as an economic revitalization area, ERA, for Real America LLC petitioner. This designation was recommended by the Economic Development Commission on May 12, 2021 and will enable the proposed affordable housing redevelopment project to be eligible for tax abatement. The resolution approves petitioner's statement of benefits, authorizes a 10-year period of abatement for real property improvements and sets its deduction schedule. The resolution also declares the intent of the council to hold a public hearing on June 16, 2021 to hear public comment on the ERA designation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crowley, are you here? I'm so sorry. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Resolution 21-20 be adopted.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, are you here to present?
I am, Council President Sims. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine. Thank you.
So with your permission, I'd like to share my screen and go through a presentation. Before I do that, I'd like to mention that Jeff Ryan with Real America is available. He is here in case we have questions for the, for the developer. And let me share my screen and I will take you through my presentation. And let me see here. Okay, try this again. Sorry. Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties. Give me one second. I apologize. Okay. I've received a new computer from the city and I didn't test this out. Okay. If you can give me two minutes, I'm going to send it to someone else who can share it for me while I talk. If you can give me two minutes, I'm going to send it to someone else who can share it for me while I talk. One second, please.
Mr. Crowley, I don't know if you're going to send that to to someone else in E S D. I'm happy to share that if you'd like to send it to me.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you very much, Steve. Okay, so I will just start talking here. I sent it to Mr. Lucas and to Ms. Cooper Smith. So if one of one of them could present. What I'm presenting tonight, so let me start. I'm Alex Crowley. I'm the Director of Economic Sustainable Development. And I am presenting tonight on a tax abatement. For a property that we all. Know and love as as the former Night Moves property. The address is seventeen thirty South Walnut. And what I'd like to do is take you through. Go to the second page. The presentation will include an overview of the process summary. For tax abatements, a summary of the site and what's happened with that site recently. Some background on Real America. And then a project overview for the site, what our local commitment is. What a, what the commitment looks like relative to some other comparable incentives that we've done recently. And then the next steps, and then I'll open it up for questions at the end. So if you could go to the next slide. So just to. Reiterate what what Ms. Cooper Smith said earlier in her presentation. With a tax abatement, the Economic Development Commission recommends a tax abatement to the common council. In this case, Resolution twenty one oh two by the E D C unanimously recommended designation of an economic revitalization area. And then Resolution twenty one oh three by the E D C. Recommended a real property tax abatement for Real America and its successor. So what we're bringing tonight is the is the E D C recommendation for your consideration. Of this property. A little history of the site. Back in two thousand seventeen, the redevelopment commission purchased the site. From a private owner for eight hundred thousand dollars. We bought the site and the building, but actually the business that was inside the building, which was Night Moves, continued to operate. On that site through two thousand nineteen, which was the end of its existing lease. In two thousand nineteen, city staff on behalf of the R D C issued a request for information. To select a development partner. And as part of that process and with our recommendation, the R D C selected Real America. In two thousand twenty, Real America pursued a competitive nine percent low income housing tax credit for the redevelopment project. And in February of two thousand twenty one, Real America was granted that very competitive low income housing tax credit award. Next slide. A little bit about Real America. It's Indianapolis based. It's a W B E certified property development company. It was established in nineteen ninety five to develop, design, construct and manage affordable housing in Indiana. As of May two thousand twenty one, Real America manages eighteen hundred twenty eight mostly affordable apartments across Indiana. It has a significant presence in Fort Wayne as well as in Columbus and Asheville. And pre pandemic, its occupancy rate was above ninety seven percent. In two thousand twenty, I H C D A Lieutenant Governor's Excellence in Affordable Housing Award was awarded to Real America. For their urban housing in Lafayette. So again, the site that we're talking about is is the former Night Mood site. It's located at seventeen thirty South Walnut. You'll see what it looks like in the in the big picture here. It's it's. It still has an old building in it. It's adjacent to the entrance to the park. And it's very well located as a result of that because it does provide walk walk in access to Switchyard Park. The eastern parking lot to Switchyard is due north of the property. So I'll talk a little bit about the project. The project as a whole is a sixty four unit, five story building with a first floor retail space on the east side on on the walnut. The northeast corner, so on the walnut side of the of the building. Of the sixty four units, forty eight will be reserved for low to moderate income residents. And will be managed by Retreat at the Switchyard LP. These forty eight units are also in partnership with Stone Belt to set aside ten apartments as housing and service areas for their clients. Real America commits to a ninety nine year term of affordability. And the sixteen units, the difference between sixty four and forty eight. Will be market rate. So there will be a market rate component to this development. Which will be managed by Switchyard M R LLC. And these sixteen units were actually added by the developer at the city's best to to densify and diversify the project. And as I mentioned, the commercial space, the three thousand square foot commercial space will be on the northeast corner of the structure, structure facing South Walnut Street. What you'll see here is a breakdown of the forty eight units by rent percentage of A M I. And then one bedroom, two bedroom, three run, et cetera. I I won't go through this in detail, but but you'll see that, you know, that there are. Units heavily skewed to the one and two bedroom configuration, although there are some three bedrooms in here as well. And this is just an extract of some of the of the layouts of the building and and facade views against this preliminary, but the the. You'll see on the upper left hand side of this slide, you'll see how the bedrooms are configured around the building. That's facing the park, which for those bedrooms facing outward will be a great view. What's on the upper right is is one of the common spaces in the building. So that's. Located in that corner there facing northwest. And then you'll get a sense of what the building might look like from the picture below. So I'm going to talk about the city's local commitment to this. The primary commitment will be that the redevelopment commission will convey the land and the structure to Real America for a dollar. That is a total value of seven hundred ninety five thousand dollars based on the current and recently updated Real America appraisal. So I'll remind you that the purchase was for eight hundred thousand dollars. This is appreciated and is now at nine hundred seventy five thousand dollars. We are proposing a tax abatement of ten years and you'll see the schedule decreases from a hundred percent. To ninety five to eighty, all the way down to five percent over the course of of ten years. The gross estimated value of the abatement is a hundred fifty four thousand three hundred seventy dollars. And the net present value is a hundred thirty eight thousand four hundred and eight dollars. And I'll note that the tax abatement is applicable only to the forty eight units. So it's the portion of the building that is not market rate. It is what what would be baited. The city, in addition to the the two above commitments. Also provided phase one and phase two environmental assessments through our EPA grant, which which. We have actually just finished and and are gearing up for another three year cycle of, but but this was one of the properties that we use the grant for. So as we discussed briefly in Ms. Cooper Smith's presentation, you know, one of the challenges with evaluating. Really any kind of local incentive package is that you have a lot of different inputs and they come from different places. And and it's hard sometimes to compare one against another, really get a sense of of are we doing too little, too much? What's the right balance of local incentive? So what you, what I've laid out here are four recent. Affordable housing projects. And I'll I'll take you through this because it actually merits some some discussion. The the top one is this one we're talking about, which is the forty eight unit. Retreated Switchyard. The land value of nine seventy five with the net present value of one thirty eight four oh eight for the tax abatement. There are no home or housing development fund dollars put but in addition to the two. So that's a total of one million. One point, we'll call it one point one million dollars. And the total of one point one divided by forty eight is how you get to twenty three thousand one hundred ninety six per affordable unit. Beeline Heights, which was is now open and operating on the beeline at at the trades district. We also had the ability to put land value in. And so the land value there was estimated at half million dollars. There was no tax abatement in that case, but there were some home dollars and and housing development fund dollars. So. The total of that was seven hundred fifty thousand dollars divided by thirty six units gets you to twenty thousand eight thirty three. I'll take you, you know, sort of highlight quickly the the other two, which are Union and Crescent, a hundred and two units and Southern Knoll, which we talked about earlier at thirty one units. Those came in, if you do the math on 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 how we did all of that, at about fifteen thousand six hundred fifty dollars per unit for affordable unit. And seventeen thousand two hundred dollars per affordable unit. So, you know, it does beg the question, why is this higher and is is that the right mix? And is that the right value that we're putting on the table? I I would note a couple of things in this case. Number one. We are correctly using nine hundred seventy five thousand dollars as the land value because in it, you know, if if we didn't do this here. Presumably we could sell the land for that that amount. So I think that's the right calculation. Having said that, the city itself is is, you know, paid the eight hundred thousand dollars. So you could also think about, you know, the land value as being. That amount, which would of course reduce this this total per unit. But we are using nine seventy five and, you know, when you think about it, it kind of makes sense that a development here. And similarly, the development near the beeline would be more expensive, especially when land values involve. What what we're deliberately doing here is signaling to the community and and achieving. An affordable housing development at one of the most prime locations in in Bloomington. As we did with Beeline Heights. So so it, you know, intellectually makes sense that the total cost that we're putting on the table when it is dominated by land value as as this and Beeline Heights was. Would be more expensive than in those cases where either we don't put land value on the table. Or perhaps the the developments are in less prime locations, which is the case for the other two. I should also finally note in this chart, you know, we have evolved our thinking over time. So you'll see the asterix asterisk under the tax payment next to the task abatement column. We, there are slightly different methodologies, but again, because we're, you know, it's a little bit. It's it's a little guesswork pre assessment. So so, you know, it doesn't materially change our judgment on this, but it but it should be noted that the tax abatement values do vary. Depending on these developments. So what happens next? Were you to vote on this tax abatement this evening positively? It would then go into a two week public review period. You would then consider a confirmatory vote on the sixteen. The planned commission site review and approval process would take us into August, possibly September. Construction is expected to to begin in the third quarter. And then the project is expected to open by the end of two thousand twenty two. So as a result of that, we anticipate the first year of abated taxes, which is that hundred percent abatement year. To be in two thousand twenty three and the final year of the beta taxes to be twenty thirty two. So that's my summary. And I am pleased, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. And thank you to whomever was presenting on my behalf. My apologies again for that.
That's okay. It was done by magic. Thank you for that presentation. We'll move the council members for any questions on Mr. Crowley or Mr. Ryan. Okay. Seeing none, we'll now go to the public. For public comment on Resolution Resolution twenty one dash twenty. I would remind you to please utilize the raise hand function in Zoom and or send our meeting host note in chat indicating your. Request to speak. Any takers, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any, no.
Okay, see now, comment from the public. We'll go back to council for any final comments. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I am in support of this tax abatement and this designation tonight. I think it's very exciting to have. Such affordable housing in a location where people don't need to rely on a car, which of course in itself is an expensive thing to maintain and. And have. So this is a great location for such a project and. I don't know if I've ever seen a chart with prospective rents where thirty percent of A M I is one row. So this is. Really truly low income housing, which is something we very much need. So I'm excited about that. So I thank everybody for their work on this.
Thank you very much. Any further comment from council? Councilmember Bowden.
Four words, ditto. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your brevity. Do we have any other comments from council members? Councilmember Smith.
Ditto. Great project. I'm going to be in support of it. Fantastic project.
Thank you very much. Any further comments, final comments from council? Okay, are we ready for the question? Saying no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bowlen.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yeah.
Scamblerie.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
And Flaherty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution twenty one dash twenty is adopted nine zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and thank you both for the presentation. Are you Mr. Crowe? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty one dash thirty be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second it with a purpose called roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, sorry.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bowlen.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yeah.
Scamblerie.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was nine oh. Will the clerk please read? It's ordinance twenty one dash thirty, sorry.
Ordinance twenty one dash thirty to amend Title sixteen of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled. Residential rental unit and lodging establishment inspection program. The synopsis is. The ordinance amends Title sixteen residential rental unit and lodging establishment inspection program. By requiring annual submittal of an occupancy affidavit. For certain types of residential rental units and providing notices of violation to be deemed properly served. If transmitted by email to the owner, email address registered with hand on the form described in section sixteen dot oh three dot oh two oh.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Flaherty.
Then move that ordinance twenty one dash thirty be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. I'm probably moving second. We have Mr. Zodi here to present this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. The notes, we're getting into the evening here, so I will be brief in my introduction and. We are glad to have this presented before you tonight for consideration. This was presented at a work session on May seventh with council members with some follow up questions. Where we researched and got answers and forwarded you a question and answer for the packet last week for the housing committee, which, as you know, recommended this unanimously to. The full council. So this affidavit really starts from a best practice that the administration discovered in West Lafayette, also a. A university town that has enacted an affidavit similar to the form that you see in your packet. The other piece that has really layered into this and resulted in us proposing this. Is the impacts of Senate Rule Act one forty eight. As you know, the that dramatically changed the relationship between the landlord and the tenant. And that relationship is one that is changing and. And we can no longer require the Rights and Responsibilities pamphlet brochure form, as you know. That Rights and Responsibilities document did have in it an affidavit, if you will. It was affirming that the tenant had reviewed the occupancy permit for the unit, and then all the tenants had signed that. That is no longer allowed to be distributed under state law. So this affidavit could be considered an extrapolation of that, which is allowed. So it doesn't, we don't believe this impacts the tenant landlord relationship in telling them what their rights and responsibilities are, et cetera. But it does, we do believe this is allowable under the law to ask for this affidavit. So the previous document, which we had talked about in the Housing Committee last week, as well as in the work session, it kind of comes down to process and enforceability and how we can better track the issue of overoccupancy. One of the issues that we brought up last week in the Housing Committee meeting was how do we track overoccupancy? It is organic sometimes. If it happens in a neighborhood, we may get a call. We may get an email. We may get something through Ureport. That may go to an inspector, then it moves to the Planning Department for a notice of violation. So we need better tracking. We need better data to really understand how to best track this problem now and going forward. So this affidavit will help do that. It'll help the city collect better data so that we can track the issue of overoccupancy better across the city. We believe it can help landlords who want to better monitor units and enforce occupancy because landlords are not interested in overoccupation. It endangers their permits. And for all the reasons we've talked about that are created by overoccupancy, landlords aren't interested in that either. And it helps tenants be aware of their role and what role they play in the rental community. This is a 65% rental community, as all of you know. And so we need to make sure that everybody has a seat at the table and understands their role very carefully. I talked to Councilmember Piedmont Smith today, and something that was very important to her was how we communicate this? What is this going to look like if this is adopted by the council? And we've heard some feedback in the midst of that. And one thing I want to tell you and communicate tonight is that the form that you see in the packet isn't a final draft. It can be, as long as the ordinance is filed, we can look at that form, that affidavit form that you see in the packet, and look at different pieces of that that work and may be cumbersome, and figure out what works best. I will, if you'll allow me, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, just to talk about your desire to see some language in there or a cover letter on the form informing the tenants exactly what it means. What is this that they're being asked to sign? And so we are perfectly amenable to that in the department. Just that the more communication, the better on this for the tenants. And of course, we've heard some feedback from the landlord community as well about a few things here and there that we believe can be tweaked on that form to make it, to kind of streamline it better. The bottom line is, we believe this helps all parties involved. And we appreciate your consideration of that tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you. And let me finish by thanking Daniel Dixon from City Legal and Brent Pierce, our Assistant Director in Hand, for their work on this. As you know, I'm new, just about two months in, and they did a lot of work on this leading up to this moment. So I want to thank them for their help there, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lucas? I'm sorry, Mr. Flaherty, Councilmember Flaherty. I'm just wondering procedurally, do I go to council for questions or do we introduce amendments? I do believe we have amendments this evening.
Either way, it's okay. Anytime a member is ready to make a motion on amendment, we can do so at this point.
Sounds like a plan. We'll go to council for questions on ordinance 21-30. Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, I was just going to ask if you wanted me to give a report from the committee?
Yes, please. If you'd like, yes, it was pass 400. So you're the chair, so please present. Thank you.
Okay, I was just going to keep it really brief. And I think Mr. Zodi already covered most everything that we talked about in the committee meeting. You'll see with our amendments, we just had some, most committee members had some concern with the whereas clause, Amendment 1. And then about, Councilmember Piedmont Smith talked about signing the affidavit every year. So that is Amendment 2. But generally, I would say the committee felt like this was a good way to work toward enforcement of this policy. So we did recommend it do pass 400.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you care to offer Amendment 1?
Yes, I can do that. Mr. President, I move-
I'm sorry, was it you or Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I think any one of us could do it.
Okay, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. President, I move Amendment 1 to 21-30.
Second?
Second?
Thank you. It's been popularly moved in second. Will you please present?
Okay, thank you very much. So Amendment 1 is striking the second whereas clause from this ordinance. The whereas clause says, "Over occupancy in residential rental units presents dangers to the health and safety of the people living in and around said unit." And while I think this is, you know, a mission of hand, I don't think this necessarily reflects the purpose of this policy because we have a lot of homes throughout the city that have more than three, you know, adults living together, whether that be homes that are rentals, that are pre-existing before the three occupancy of unrelated. So, you know, with five bedrooms with five adults, or whether it be owner-occupied units with many more people in them. So it just sort of sounded like if this was a danger to neighbors or people living in the house, it would be a danger, no matter what kind of house it was, rental or owner-occupied. And I just thought that wasn't the case. I would say if any other co-sponsor wants to chime in on that, feel free.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I do believe Councilmember Flaherty, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and myself are co-sponsors. I don't think I've missed anyone. Do we have any questions of them or comments from the co-sponsors?
I think Councilmember Rosenbarger summarized it well. It's just in reading that particular whereas clause, it seemed to imply that overoccupancy was only taking place in these residential rental units. And that is not necessarily the case. And it also says that overoccupancy presents dangers, whereas really, it may present dangers, it may not. So we just felt that it was a little bit too strong for this context.
Thank you.
At least that was my perspective. Thank you.
I think you're absolutely correct. And I think as a co-sponsor, I just think it just gave the absolutely wrong perception when compared to other housing units, and particularly with some of the particular rental, single-family homes, painting a different picture that is not consistent. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Okay, seeing none, then we'll go to council for questions of any on Amendment 1. Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comments. Public comment on Amendment 1. I will remind you, this is for Amendment 1 only on ordinance 21-30. And please indicate by using a raise hand function on Zoom and/or sending a note to our meeting host indicating your desire to speak. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I believe we've got Mark Fig, who would like to comment, who should now be able to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, I can't get it to, I can't get my camera to let you guys see me, but that's okay.
I don't think you're allowed to set up to do that with us, but we hear you fine.
Great, thank you, Council President Sims. My name is Mark Fig, president of Fig Property Group and Kirkwood Management. I've been operating in this market for almost 40 years. I'm hard to admit that, but forever it seems like. So, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the Monroe County Apartment Association. So, you know, we really didn't get to meet about this with, you know, the late, late notice and people on vacations and such. I mean, we represent 100 landlords and about 4,000 units in this market.
Brief point of order, Mr. Fig, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify and ask our president for clarification. This public comment period is only on Amendment 1, which is the second whereas clause being struck from the ordinance. I think I just got the impression that perhaps you were speaking from your perspective to the ordinance as a whole, and we will have public comment for that.
I'll just wait then.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
I'm okay with the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Fig, and thank you, Councilor Problem and Territorial Flaherty. Thank you. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to council for any final comments on Amendment 1 for ordinance 21-30. Councilmember Rallo?
Could we hear from Director Zodi about his opinion of the amendment?
You're muted.
Could we hear from Director Zodi?
You know, he was muted, not you.
Yes, appreciate that, Councilmember Rallo. We are, we don't believe this amendment changes the functional piece of the affidavits. So if the council feels that it should be deleted, we don't have any opposition to that. So it was a whereas clause that was put in there to sort of reiterate the mission of hand and the reason why, one of the reasons why we do all of this. And so we don't have any opposition to this operationally. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any further final comments on Amendment 1 by council? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment 1?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amendment 1 of ordinance 21-30 is adopted 9-0. I do believe we have a second amendment 2. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I move Amendment 2 to ordinance 21-30.
Second?
All right, thank you. It's been moved in second. You care to please present, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. So this amendment is co-sponsored by myself and Council President Sims. And it, within the ordinance as written, it says that if there's no change in occupancy since the previously filed occupancy affidavit, the owner may indicate no change in occupants instead of having the occupants sign the affidavit again. And this amendment would just strike that sentence so that tenants would have to sign the occupancy affidavit every year, even if they are repeat tenants at the same location. And the intention is to remind the tenants that the city, you know, is keeping an eye on the occupancy and that the city does have occupancy limits in rental properties. And of course, this only is, makes sense if there is a clear layperson's context to the affidavit form itself, which is what prompted my conversation with Mr. Zodi earlier today. And I do appreciate that that hand is planning to give some context on the form so that it's clear why the city is asking people to sign this. And I just felt that it's a good reminder to people, even if, you know, they've done it a year ago. It's good to remind them that, hey, there's a reason that only you three people are on the lease. And to affirm that with a signature, I think, has value in, you know, conveying that message that we have policies for a certain reason, you know, for the welfare of the community.
Thank you. And I would just add that with state law changes, it hinders hand department in the city in order to, as Mr. Zodi said, just perform our duties. And the main thing here is occupants who will move from one year to the next will still have to comply by signing an updated affidavit. And I, just speaking for myself, thought that was very important because education and, or at least an annual reminder of what the occupancy rules and expectations are, I think is very important. So having said that, do we have any questions from council of either sponsor on Amendment 2? Okay, see, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, would we be able to ask for staff to weigh in as well? I'd like to ask that.
Yes, Mr. Zodi?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. We are, we prefer the ordinance as written, where the landlord, property owner could say, just affirm that there have been no changes. I talked to Councilmember Piedmont Smith about this earlier today, just in full disclosure. So I'm not telling you all anything that I haven't told her, who's a sponsor of the amendment. But we are okay with it. The preferred route for us would be the ordinance as written just because it would allow for a more streamlined process with the affidavit. With some of the feedback I heard today, conversations with one person, there is a, we are looking at ways where the form can be electronically submitted. And we feel like this maybe one step makes it a little onerous in our minds, a little more onerous that we would put landlords under that scrutiny. So we think we are, we would prefer it to be as written. So we would not support the amendment, but respectfully have stated why. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan.
Yes, I'd like to follow up to Mr. Zodi's comment. So I guess maybe the concern I have that Councilmember Piedmont Smith articulated is the nature of the audience, the clientele for the majority of housing in Bloomington, of rental housing. The students are, in fact, typically people who I've said in previous meetings find themselves having to move every year. Do you, I guess I'm a little puzzled that you don't see there being an educational benefit. I mean, considering how difficult it is to reach a clientele that moves every year, you know, like, isn't there an upside to this idea?
Well, I think there are plenty of upsides. I think I'm thinking more, Councilmember Volan, about sort of process and the other paperwork that we take in in the department. I think the most, one of the most valuable ideas that's come out of these conversations is what we put on the form in the first place, right? So if the tenant has good information about why they're being asked to do this, they're affirming that they've read that, and it will make it obviously user-friendly so that it's not pages and pages of why, it's a paragraph or two, so that you're not, you know, it isn't one of those practices where we all say, yes, I've read the terms, and you accept and move on. But it's a really understanding what this means for people in Bloomington. So it's a communications exercise there. And so we just feel from a more of a process standpoint, it's not an education standpoint. And I see your point. I respect that. But we feel like from a paperwork standpoint, you know, we've got the rental permits, we've got the cycle inspections and everything that's involved there. And so we think reducing the step for efficiency purposes is why we prefer the ordinance as written.
But doesn't it in a way mean that there's no fewer or there's no more steps than there were before because we don't longer can recirculate the Rights and Responsibilities form? So it's not an increase in paperwork?
Well, the step that would be involved in Daniel Dixon, if- Well, the step that would be involved in Daniel Dixon, if, if, let me ask him to chime in if there's anything I'm missing here, but it would require the, the tenants to sign it again. So if, if tenants were, if, if, if the tenants were asked to sign each year, rather than the landlord or property owner submitting the form back to hand and saying there have been no changes and they check a box or they make some affirmation of that, they're getting, they have to go back to the tenants and say, hey, I need you guys to sign this again, even if the tenants are continuing to live there in a multi-year basis. So that's the step in there that, that we feel is a bit too onerous for really the tenants, but also the landlord. It's one more thing that the landlords would need to do in the midst of the inspections and any other procedures we might put in place as we look at how this relationship is changing. So we're trying to be respectful of all folks involved here in, in our, in our opinion on this. And Daniel's on, in case I left anything out there, Danny.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I, I just wanted to add to John's statement that, that if a student, like if we take, for example, a student tenant does move from one apartment to the, to a different apartment, that would be a, a change in occupancy that would require a new affidavit to be completed. They only would need to, to complete a new one as written if they were a multi-year tenant in the same dwelling unit.
But there's also the case that frequently students room with each other, they're living in multi-bedroom units, and somebody comes and goes. So isn't there a benefit to having the new student have to affirm?
Well, they, they would have to. I think the, this is, if there are no changes, if it's, if it's the same three people that were on the first affidavit in 2020, and there have been no changes to those tenants, they, the, the property owner landlord would just check the box or whatever tool we put in there and say there have been no changes. If there was any change, like my senior year, Councilmember, I, I lived at the corner of Sixth and Grant. I interned somewhere else the fall semester and another guy lived there, and then we traded. He moved out and I moved in. So I would have had to sign that affidavit because he was going off and I was coming in. So that would be an example, maybe what you're talking about, if I may. And I would have had to sign the affidavit and because, and he would have come off. So that would have been a change that would have enacted the landlord saying, I've had some changes here. So otherwise, if I'd lived, if I'd lived there again, or if he'd stayed there, this as written would not require a change in the affidavit. It's when the people change that triggers the, the.
I got it. That's fine. Thank you so much. Thank you both.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a question. Mr. Zodi?
Yes.
It is true, of course, leases are signed every year, correct?
I would say typically, not always.
Annual leases are signed yearly, correct?
Sure, yes.
And I guess I'm wondering why can't affidavits be done at similar same time? I don't, I don't think it's onerous at all, I think, and I do value the education part. So not to be argumentative at all, but I don't see a real additional problem to do the affidavit when we're doing the lease. What, what, what say you to that?
Well, I would say, I respect the opinion. I don't find it argumentative at all, Councilmember. There are, if there are multi-year leases, if there's a different term of a lease, I think we are not able to, you know, we want to make this as user-friendly as possible for both the city, the tenant and the landlord, and we're not able to, I think it'd be harder to, sort of, I won't say police, that's a wrong word, but to sort of monitor, you know, this lease, how long is this? We don't have the ability to monitor the terms of a lease. It's the, because the lease isn't required to be submitted with the affidavit. It's the, it's the property owner telling us, here are the three people that live here this year. Here are the people, if, are they going to live there next year? Yes or no? If they are not, you need a new affidavit. If they are, you just tell us they're the same. So you can't really bring the leases into it, if you will, because we don't have any, and Daniel, correct me if I'm wrong here, we don't have much enforcement power around the lease terms. So our hands are kind of tied there on how we can use that as a metric for when the affidavit should be filled out. So we're keeping it as an annual process, regardless of the term of the lease. Are the same people living there in September of 2021 that are living there in September of 2022? Tell us yes or no, and that would trigger the change or not, if that answers your question.
I, I see your point, but I was just comparing the ease of doing them both at the same time, which they're required simultaneously either way. So I don't, again, I don't see it as onerous or extra. And I think it's important that even from year to year, a reminder on occupancy expectations and laws or code, I, I think is still a good thing. So thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any? Or where comments from council, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I wanted to just ask Mr. Dixon as the legal advisor whether he sees anything, anything legally problematic with amendment two?
No, I'm not aware of anything legally problematic with the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, do we have any further questions from council to the sponsors? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on amendment two. Please indicate by using the raise hand function in Zoom, or you can send our meeting post a note in chat indicating your intent to speak, and this is on amendment two, not the entire ordinance twenty-one dash thirty. And before we get started, Mr. Lucas is the clerk logged back on?
I am, yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. My apologies, everyone.
No, you're, you're fine. Just double checking. Okay, Mr. Lucas, who we have for public speaking?
Yes, I'm not sure if Mr. Fig had his hand raised from, from an earlier period, but he would be up first and should be able to unmute.
I just want to speak to the, to the overall ordinance, not the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Greg Alexander, I believe, is the other commenter and should be ready to go.
Thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. I just wanted to say it's not uncommon for a lease to automatically renew without anything new being signed every year. That is actually the arrangement that I have with my tenant. It would be another pointless interaction with my tenant for me to do this. Exactly like Mr. Zodi said, it's just we shouldn't penalize multi-year tenants. I, I understand it's a small penalty, but it's, 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 it's just stupid. Thanks.
Thank you for comments, Mr. Alexander. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Do you have a comment via chat from the B Square Beacon? And the comment reads, question, was there any public outreach to renters on this amendment or the legislation as a whole? And that's the end of the comment.
Okay, thank him for his comment. Do we have any further that you're aware of?
Not that I see, no.
Thank you, seeing none. We'll go back to council for any final comments on amendment two. Councilmember Bolan and then Councilmember Flaherty.
So, I mean, I recall as a student living in the same house for three years, I was quite proud of it. But I had different roommates each year. So, you know, I, I think that, I mean, I think Mr. Zodi's point is well taken that any change would trigger, you know, a renewal of the statement. But I mean, I know also from my experience that my tenure, more than one year, was absolutely the exception and not the rule. That the, the majority, I mean, I, with all due respect to Mr. Alexander, who I'm entertained to know is also a landlord too. You know, like, the, maybe there's a way we can make it a little bit simpler, but I, I don't think that this is a federal case and there's so much education necessary in a town that's literally geared towards education, so much education on city issues that I don't see the harm in this amendment. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your comments. Do we have any other, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thanks. I, I appreciate the intent and the goals of the sponsors, voting against the amendment. I, I think it, we tend to think of this ordinance as addressing a particular population and, and helping to enforce a particular part of code, which relates to a certain type of rental unit, and we, and we tend to think of undergraduate students, but we have about as many non-undergraduate student renters in this community as we do undergraduate student renters. I, I've been one for most of my tenure in Bloomington. Many or most of my peers are, or have been for most of their time in Bloomington. And Mr. Alexander has a point that there a lot of people have month-to-month leases, people have leases that automatically renew and other things. And to Mr. Bolan's, or Councilmember Bolan's point, points, i- in pretty much all the, you know, he mentioned he was the exception, not the rule, but in the rule that he's implying there, all of those would require an affidavit already. So I think for the audience or the type of, of tenant we're trying to capture that audience of undergraduate students, I think overwhelmingly the ordinance is drafted, probably will do that. And I, I do worry a little bit about some of the minorly burdensome elements of this for folks. I think we'll probably hear about that from Mr. Fig. It sounded like his, his comments were probably going in that direction, and I think it's something to balance. And I, I just think the ordinance is drafted, is, is better without the amendment. So I'll be voting against it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I appreciate this amendment and, and the thoughtfulness that has gone into it. There was a period of time where I was a landlord, now I live in my house again, but I think the ordinance as drafted and like putting this responsibility to at least verify every year on the landlord is enough. I mean, they're still doing that work, so they're still probably reaching out to their tenants to verify that the people who signed originally are still there. And so for me, that is enough that this work is still being done. It's just that the tenants don't have to sign. So I feel fine with it as is. So I will be voting no.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none for amendment two. Will the clerk please call the roll, please?
Councilmember Rollo?
No.
Bolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, amendment one, I'm sorry, amendment two for ordinance twenty-one dash three passes five to four. Now, we will go to ordinance twenty-one dash thirty as amended. And we will go to, I do believe, Mr. Lucas, I'm sorry, Mr. Flaherty, are we on public comment?
Um, up, up to you.
Trying to remember.
We never actually considered council questions on the ordinance as a whole prior to diving into amendments.
Okay, thank you. I just, no, thank you. I just want to be kept straight, remember where we were. Okay, we'll go to council for questions on ordinance twenty-one dash thirty as amended. Okay. Seeing, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I did have a question for staff. I, I believe, again, not to put words in Mr. Fig's mouth, but I believe the direction he was going, and, and we received another email this evening, I think on behalf of or with the interest of landlords in mind, sort of, either, either requesting that they had had more input or maybe some concerns about process. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Zodi what interactions his office had had with landlords or, or the apartments association or others in the development of this, or what feedback they've had and what those conversations have looked like, if any, up to this point. Thanks.
Right, we, we didn't do a proactive outreach to the apartment association. We've received feedback here today. I spoke to Mr. Fig on the phone today, and I, I've seen the email as well. So where I think there's opportunity here for a collaboration is on the actual form, if the, if the ordinance is adopted. We didn't seek input on the drafting, the language, but the implementation and execution of the form, I think, is where we see opportunity for collaboration there, which we're happy to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for their public comment on ordinance twenty-one dash thirty as amended. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom if you intend to speak, or send our meeting post a note through chat indicating your intent to speak publicly. Okay, Mr. Lucas, who do we have?
First up is Mark Fig.
Thank you. This is Mark Fig, Fig Property Group, and on behalf of the Monroe County Apartment Association. We represent about four thousand units and about a hundred landlords in Bloomington, and really operate as kind of a best practices organization. Important to note, we took a poll of our members after the state legislation was passed about the rights and responsibilities form. We unanimously said we value that form, and everybody plans to keep using that on some basis. We think it's a good communication tool with tenants. So it's very interesting, you know, what you perceive there. But I would, I do want to say that, you know, since we're in the community and are, you know, been around for a long times an organization, we always collaborate with everybody regarding COVID response, regarding the housing study going into the new zoning ordinance, and having no collaboration with the administration, it struck me having Kaiser Goodman present tonight about the Kirkwood Avenue Court, or how much, you know, outreach and collaboration was done. So I'll just say I'm really disappointed that that didn't happen, and that this is coming to us as an organization so late. So my comments are going to be directed toward it, understanding that we haven't really had time to go to our members specifically, each person, and really collaborate about this internally even. So I just want to say that I, I question whether there's really a problem. I've seen no data that indicates there's an over occupancy problem. All landlords have leases with their tenants that specifically say what they can and can't do, and who they can and can't have there, and we enforce it. So I'll just say, I, I feel like we're doing this for no reason in some, in some cases. We've, we really have, I also feel like the fee structure, the penalty in that, in the ordinance seems odd to me. It's high. If you look at other, other fees inside hand, that seems exorbitant, especially the penalty jail fines, felony level six, which is, you can hit a cop and have a felony level six. So it seems pretty heavy-handed to me. I have real concerns about the electronic form. Many of you don't know this, but you can't schedule a rec, a cycle inspection with hand over email. You have to make a phone call to do that. So I just, I'm really concerned about how the form works and if it's going to work, because our tenants don't visit us and sign leases. They sign from all over the world in some cases. So just that, if this goes, we need to have that really set correctly, because otherwise it not, it doesn't work. So also with the penalty on this, the email notification, email-only notification, I don't know if that's legal or not, but I can tell you spam filters catch people's emails. It's not a hundred percent. We need to have letters as well if you're, if, if the city thinks somebody's not complying. I just feel like an email only is not good enough. I also have questions about the public record of when we submit these things, these affidavits, they have people's emails and personal information that, and you, it says parents. So I just feel like that's a little overreaching, a little bit intrusive from a privacy standpoint. We haven't done that before. Again, we like to collaborate as an organization and me as a developer. I feel this is very rushed. I don't see where the fire is or that it has to take place immediately. So I'm, I would respectfully ask you to table this for tonight. Do it at the, do it next in this, in the fall. And, you know, see how it goes then. Again, the majority of us are still going to use the rights and responsibilities form. So we're already functionally operating according to your, what your wishes. And don't forget, most properties are completely leased for fall and everything's signed and done. I don't think our tenants have any obligation now to sign this form before they move in in the fall, this coming fall. So those are my comments. I look forward to collaborating further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fig. Appreciate your comments. What do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Greg Alexander.
Hi, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. First off, I got to apologize for my previous comment. I, I didn't mean any insults to the sponsors of the amendment. I just feel like it would be stupid for me to go and hassle my tenant every year for no reason. I, anyhow, I I, anyhow, I urge you to oppose this ordinance. It is adding a meaningless hurdle in service of bad policy. My household is a traditional four person nuclear family, two parents, two children. What's a little unusual is that we're living in a tiny 700 square foot house on a ten taker lot. And yet, I don't think our density presents dangers to the health and safety. Why is that? You know, would we harm the neighborhood if my wife and I were not married? Would it cross the line if I didn't own the house and we were renters? When the kids become adults, does it suddenly become bad? What if they're my friends' kids instead of my own? Hogwash, the three unrelated adults rule penalizes people. It would be one thing if we were regulating incidental externalities like noise or parking, but the ordinance is directly targeted at people as people. It doesn't even pretend. You struck the whereas clause justifying this ridiculous policy because the whereas clause was wrong. Without that justification, how does the rule itself make sense? And then the affidavit asks landlords to take an invasive interest in the tenants. I am myself a small time landlord, just one little house, same tenant for 10 years now. And the idea of making personal and diligent inquiry into my tenant's private life gives me the creeps. There are landlords who do that sort of stuff already. And if you watch the Bloomington Facebook groups, you'll see they're famously abusive. And now this law would require me to act just like those jerks. No, thank you. I will not do it. I will ask the tenant to fill out the form and I will sign it no matter what they write. No decent respectful landlord would do anything else. Never mind that the hand department is dramatically overworked already. Whenever I have to interact with them, I usually have to wait days or weeks to advance the next step in the process. If they have to send an inspector, it can take much more than a month. And that's no insult to the staff. They're a tiny group with a huge responsibility in a city where well over half of the residences are rentals. Bizarrely, they're tasked with keeping the sidewalks clear of snow and vegetation, and you'll hear no end of excuses from them about why that task simply goes uncompleted. I say excuses, but it's valid. They really are dramatically overtaxed. And now let's give them an annual interaction with landlords. They will be stretched even more thinly. And on top of that, these affidavits won't make a difference. For a summer when I was an undergraduate, I sublet a room out of a house with four other guys. It was only a four bedroom house. One of the guys slept in the enclosed back porch. The other guys all had girlfriends that moved in and out over time. If you think a landlord is going to meaningfully police an arrangement like that, you're delusional. This is a bad attempt to enforce a bad rule. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Return to council for final comments on ordinance twenty one dash thirty as amended. Councilmember Flaherty?
Actually, another question, I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Zodi again about maybe perhaps his phone call with Mr. Fig or other interactions with folks, either with the apartments association or otherwise. And I know he mentioned that there was opportunity for collaboration on on the form going forward and some of those things. I I guess I'm just feeling a little bit uncomfortable voting on the ordinance tonight, because I think some some reasonable concerns have been raised that ideally I'd like, I'd like time to try to work through with those folks. Or alternatively, here, maybe here's some of those concerns addressed. So I guess to frame the question more specifically, Mr. Zodi, do you have any more specific responses to any of the concerns that Mr. Fig raised in his comment?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. The fine concern is a range, so it's no more than $500. It could be $0, $5, $10. It's a range, so I think the range is what he's expressing concern about being high. So that would be the response on the fine issue. On the mail versus email, the e-signature stuff and some of the other concerns he and I discussed today. Those I would consider to be operational things that we can talk about as long as the the ordinance is, you know, it's within the confines of the ordinance. Some of those administrative things can be worked out in collaboration with the apartment association if he's amenable to that, which I understood he is, both in his comments tonight and this afternoon, if it passes. So and Daniel, I don't know if you'd have anything to add there on how the form would be adjusted.
I just wanted to, I guess, address one other thing. Yeah. The concern about the perjury issue that's in the template form. As Mr. Zodi and I discussed earlier, that that language is actually not required in the form. That may be a relic of a previous iteration of this draft. There is a penalty prescribed in the ordinance for failure to provide a form or complete a form. And I think it would be a simple adjustment to have the the form reference the prescribed penalty in the ordinance and that be the limitation.
Okay, thank you. Any further, Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions, just to help me think through this. First, as a matter of housekeeping, I'm not seeing a fiscal impact statement per se in here. Am I missing it? Is there anything we need to know about staffing and administering this and the costs associated with that for hand?
I would have to get back to you on that, Councilmember Scamblerie. I, this would be processed through our our frontline staff, our rental specialists who work with that on the, on processing rental permits and what we have in Rent Pro, which is our database there. Brent Pierce is on in case he has any additional comments there on how it would be administered. And we don't right now see any additional staff coming on to do that. So we would have a direct fiscal impact there.
So at some point, perhaps a written statement indicating that there's no anticipated fiscal impact would be appropriate for this ordinance, I would ask for that. Also, I keep coming back to the issue of timing and I would echo Councilmember Flaherty's question about my words, not his, you know, does this need a little more baking? Does this need a little bit more thought? In particular, is there, Mr. Zodi, is there anything you could share with us about the timing? Is there a reason? Is there a window of opportunity that's expiring soon for some reason or?
Well, as the ordinance is written, and I will, I don't want to defer immediately to my colleagues. Just make sure that we're covering all of the work that's been done on this, Councilmember. We are coming up on September, so making sure there's enough lead time to make this operational would be the goal and the timing here. And starting the new academic year, understanding that, as Mr. Fig said, a lot of leases are signed. But just to get communication going on as soon as possible, we know as students come back and with the new academic year, there's going to need to be lead time on getting that operational by September. So that was the goal on moving this as a priority for the administration.
Would you consider pushing it back a little bit?
That's up to the council.
I know it is, but.
So we'll respect the discretion of the council here. I think we can work to collaborate, to work some of these issues out. I won't say, I'm not going to say, you all know me, I won't promise things I can't deliver on. But I feel pretty confident we can collaborate, make sure that we do the very best we can with the actual affidavit form. But of course, we'll respect the discretion of the council here on what you all decide. I'm not going to overpromise that. But we have talked about that quite a bit today and after speaking to Councilmember Piedmont Smith about some of the things that we'd want to put on there. And I'm in agreement that more communication with tenants, the better. So we think we could get it going.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bolin.
Thank you. Yeah, I share the concerns that my fellow colleagues have already articulated. And I just want to say briefly that we do have at least two more weeks before recess. I think there's a possibility that we might be able to hammer out some fixes in the next two weeks. But I wanted to follow up with a question about email. Why is it that a rental cycle inspection cannot be scheduled over email?
And I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember. It's my understanding they can now. Brent, can you comment on that, please?
Yeah, thank you, councilors. This is Brent Pierce. I'm the Assistant Director at the Hand Department. It's from my experience, and I send the emails on that come to the general hand account requesting cycle inspections. I send those to the frontline staff almost every day for scheduling inspections. So it's my, it's been my experience in day to day operations in that a property owner can reach out via email and get ahold of frontline staff to schedule. Now, the frontline staff may call to confirm date and time. But as far as communicating via email regarding inspections, that happens every day.
Okay, so I guess then I also wanted to follow up about spam filters. Do you guys ever have complaints from either landlords or even tenants who might communicate with you that they didn't get a message or you didn't get their message? What experience of any do you have with dealing with mail going into spam filters?
I can address that to John Zodi, if that's okay. So in my going on, I believe, seven months with the department and handling, again, the general hand@bloomington.in.gov email that is often used for registration forms, complaint forms, inspection information. I can probably tell you three times where I did have to check something and found something in spam. But that's out of, at this point, probably hundreds, if not a thousand, you know, emails about this, that type of information.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Any other, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I want to ask two things. First of all, I'd like to ask the parliamentarian, can we just ask to table this for a couple of weeks? As most of us are feeling uncomfortable. Mr. Flaherty?
I'm happy to weigh in.
Or President Sims, can we, can we do that? To give everybody time to kind of process this and to you know, take further input?
I'm happy to weigh in, President Sims.
Thank you.
Yes, we could consider a motion to postpone to a future date. We could simply choose not to call the question tonight and go to a third reading. It could be sent back to a housing committee meeting. There's any number of options that we could take. And I suppose we'd want to avoid calling the question for a vote if it was a will of the majority to postpone, because we wouldn't want the ordinance to fail for that reason.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm at the point where I'm just kind of uncomfortable with taking a yes or no vote on this tonight. Just doesn't feel, it just doesn't feel that gets settled and I don't know. Anyway, I just wanted to express my feelings on that. It's so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. And I do apologize. I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think that unless you see the full screen, you don't see everyone. To the parliamentarian, do we need to have a date in mind? And can we provide direction in terms of the hand department? Not requiring, but at least it would be helpful, it seems to me, to have this dialogue with the landlord association.
Sorry, Mr. President, should I, I'm not sure if I was supposed to comment in or not, so, excuse me.
Happy to weigh in again, Mr. President, if that's okay.
Yes.
And may need confirmation from Mr. Lucas here as well. I believe we would not want to postpone it, definitely as the effect of killing the ordinance. We I'm not sure if we could postpone. I suppose we could postpone to a future date that would be determined. Yeah, but I'm not sure about that. Mr. Lucas, do you have?
If I could weigh in, I would suggest, and I know this may not be ideal. The most availability would be regular session on July 21st, first session right after recess. From a scheduling standpoint.
Well, can we hear from Mr. Zodi?
Yeah.
About that? Whether that gives adequate time for a meeting and dialogue?
May I ask for clarification, Councilman Rallo? Are you asking if from tonight, if July 21st would give adequate timing for us to collaborate, if you will, and work something out? Is that your question?
Well, I guess it's twofold. One is, is that the appropriate date? Is that a good date for you? But before that, are you amenable to just meeting the concerns? It sounds like there needed to be a bit more discussion. And, you know, that hopefully could be arranged, would that be?
I will say plainly that this is a priority for the administration. I would, if we do, if you are considering respect, I'm just going to say respectful at the beginning of this because I don't want to speak out of turn here. But I would encourage the council to fix a date where we would hear this again if possible, so that we can work off of the timeline. I think that works best operationally for us to have a timeline fixed with our stakeholders in the community that we're proposing talking to. As well as, I do want to just speak on behalf of the administration, this is a priority, so I would like to see it move. And but that can't happen without all of you being comfortable, so I respect that as well. And so, but I would ask, if I may, to fix a date where this would be heard again. And I will work diligently to meet that timeline, because I'm asking you to do it.
Does July 21st work for you?
That would be fine. If that's, I think that is about as, to be honest, if I may, that's about as far out as I'd want to go. Just with getting this moving and making sure we're in operation, that's going to be right in the middle of budget time too, so it's going to be busy.
Councilmember Bolin, then Councilmember Scamblerie, and then Councilmember Sandberg.
I was just going to, thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to say that, you know, as a point of order, that the, it'd be appropriate for the motion to be, to be a motion to postpone to a particular date. The, I think that we could consider postponing to June 16th. And then we can always decide to postpone again if we don't think it's ready. And the appropriate thing is to postpone to another reading. Like this is a good example of legislation that needs a third reading, simply put. So that's what I would favor and, you know, I'm happy to make the motion to move to June 16th or to July 21st. That's it. That's my thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Scamblerie?
I would echo those thoughts as I think about what we have to cover. June 16th is pretty full. I mean, we do have several votes that night. That said, I think some of those pieces of legislation are pretty straightforward, like the creation of an ARPA fund, for example. And we've already done a lot of discussion tonight, so I don't know that we would necessarily need to relive this whole discussion on the 16th. So I would be supportive of, and I can understand Mr. Zodi's comment that July 21st is quite a ways away. And so I would be supportive of, I know it's crowded, but I would be supportive of moving this to a third reading on the 16th. Thanks.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, I would be fine with that as well. I don't think there's a whole lot more that needs to be done. So I would be fine moving it to June 16th. I do trust the hand staff. They do some very critically important work for us with respect to our rental properties. We are, as many people have noted throughout prior discussions in this one, we are a 65% rental community. So the work that they do is critically important, and I listen to them when they come forward and tell us this is a useful policy and I believe it. I stand by the three person rule. That was put in place for a very good reason in this community, as many people from our neighborhoods will attest. And so that is not in question. If there are communications that were skipped and we need to have a better dialogue with people who can make this better, by all means, let's take the time to do that. But I don't know that we need a lot of time, and so I would be happy to postpone until June 16th.
Okay, thank you. I'll vote our parliamentarian and our council staff. What? Is it just a motion that'll be needed to postpone? Okay, I'll defer to our parliamentarian. And that is for June 16th, correct?
Yes, and we move, we postpone ordinance 21-30 until the regular session on June 16th.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And, oh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that make it 10-0 or 9-0? Does that make it 10 or 9? Oh, we'll pass at 9:00 and we'll review this again on the 16th. Now, Mr. Parliamentarian. That ends our second readings and resolutions. Do we need a motion to continue in order to go first readings?
No, but just a quick reminder that based on the 10:30 rule, all votes for council action, which I think would include introductions and referrals to committee, if if any motions are had on those, would require a two thirds majority to pass from this point. That make sense? Sorry.
I'm not so sure.
For for any, for the motion to introduce, or if we have any motions to refer to committee under the first readings section, those will just need to pass with a two thirds majority instead of the normal majority. So that's the the only change. Other than that, we don't need a a motion to extend time or anything now.
Thank you very much. And hearing that, we do have legislation for first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move that ordinance 21-25 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Yeah.
Scambleri.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Sorry, yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
And Bowden.
Yes.
Thank you. And that passed 9:00. Would a clerk please read?
Ordinance 21-25, to establish the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, ARPA Fund, supporting the city of Bloomington's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. The synopsis is, this ordinance creates an American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA Fund. The fund may be used for the purposes permitted by the U.S. Department of the Treasury under its interim final rule for the expenditure of ARPA funds, including A, responding to the COVID-19 pandemic's negative economic impacts on households, small businesses, nonprofits, and industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. B, to provide premium pay to eligible workers of the city that are performing essential work or providing grants to employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. C, to fund government services to the extent of the reduction in city revenues due to the COVID-19 pandemic relative to revenues collected in the fiscal year prior to the emergency 2019. And or D, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure.
Thank you. I do believe we have more legislation for first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, did you wish to send this to second reading or committee?
No, no, no. I wish to refer this to the committee of the whole June 9th, 6:30 p.m.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, waiting to see. Okay, thank you. We do have more first reading, legislation for first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21-28 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Scambleri.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And passes nine zero. Would a clerk please read?
Ordinance 21-28, an ordinance to amend ordinance 20-23, which fixed salaries for certain City of Bloomington employees for the year 2021, regarding to change the grade of existing positions in the Office of the Mayor, the Parks Department, and the Utilities Department, and revise job titles within the Police and Fire Departments, and the Office of the Mayor to better reflect the nature of those positions. The synopsis is, this ordinance amends ordinance 20-23, which fixed the salaries of certain City of Bloomington employees for the year 2021 by changing the grade and job title of one existing position in the Office of the Mayor and changing the grade of an existing position in the Parks Department and in the Utilities Department. In addition, this ordinance changes the titles of one existing position in both the Fire Department and Police Department. All changes were made to more accurately reflect the duties of these positions. There is a note. It is, this ordinance was revised after distribution in the legislative packet, but before being introduced at the June 2nd, 2021 regular session. The revisions corrected two dates in the second whereas clause from 2021 to 2020, corrected the title of the four positions that will that will be renamed within the Police Department and modified the first sentence of the synopsis to identify the particular ordinance being amended.
Thank you very much. And I would prefer to refer this to committee of the whole on June 9th, beginning at 6:30 as well. Okay, looking for any council input. Thank you. Mr. Flaherty, we have more first readings, legislation for first reading.
We do. Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance, that ordinance 21-29 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Then properly moved in second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yeah.
And Scambleri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes nine zero, and I wish to refer it to committee of the whole June 9th, beginning at 6:30 as well. Pause for a little second for council input. Okay, thank you. We will now move to
Wait, was that actually read?
I need, I do need to read it.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Tell them it's getting late. The clerk, please read. Thank you for catching that, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Ordinance 21-29, amending ordinance 20-22, which fixed the salaries of officers of the Police and Fire Departments for the City of Bloomington for 2021, regarding title change for fire inspector. The synopsis is, this ordinance amends ordinance 20-22, which fixed the salaries of officers in the Police and Fire Departments for the year 2021. This changes the title of the fire inspection officer to deputy fire marshal in the Fire Department Administration Table.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, I wish to refer that to committee of the whole June 9th, beginning at 6:30. There's no opposition. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we now move to additional public comment. I will say this is set aside for 25 minutes maximum. And if anyone cares to make public comment on items not on tonight's agenda, please indicate by using a raised hand function or sending our meeting post a note via chat. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you very, very much. And we'll now go to matters of council schedule.
Yes, thank you. I don't have any any items for you tonight. Just a reminder that the council has two Wednesday meetings before your scheduled summer recess. I believe it was mentioned tonight that the first regular session after summer recess will be July 21st. There is a scheduled work session earlier in July that may or may not have items for your for your preview, so no action is needed tonight, but depending on what what gets added to your schedule, that that work session may or may not be needed. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I move on in with the agenda, I just want to thank members of the public and our colleagues. Have a lot of things on our agenda, so I appreciate your patience and your diligence and your thoroughness. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, council. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, and I also see Councilmember Scambleri had her had her hand raised. I did neglect to mention the PS Lit Committee. I did want to mention this, is looking to schedule its first meeting. And and that may be happening sometime next week. So for the council members that are serving on that committee, please watch your emails for for information about that. And we're working with the county and folks from Ellisville and Steinsville on getting that scheduled. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I responded today. Councilmember Scambleri.
Yes, President Sims, did you want to make a quick announcement about our intentions to meet virtually versus in person before and after the break, just for the public's benefit?
Well, since the emergency's been extended, it was my understanding that we're going to meet virtually up until our recess, until, was that the 16th? And then once we come back after recess on July 21st, then we will go to the hybrid meeting schedule. Of course, between now and then, we still have some some things to work out with council chambers and processes and procedures. But yes, thank you, Councilmember Scambleri. We will meet virtually for the next two meetings. And then when we return from council recess on July 21st, we will be meeting, as it stands now, virtue in a hybrid manner, which is virtually and some in person. And that may also apply to a work session, should it happen before that. But we'll we'll advertise that if that's the case. I do believe I'm correct, Members of the House. Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, within a second. Everybody have a great night. Again, thank you very much.